It is now ten minutes after seven o'clock. It is now Tuesday, September eighth, 2015. Time for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Beloit City Council here at one eight-hundred State Street, Beloit, Wisconsin. Item one is a call to order, which I've already done, and roll call.
There are five present with Hendricks and DeForest absent.
All right. Item two is a pledge of allegiance. Will you please stand?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is special orders of the day announcements. Three A.
Is a proclamation recognizing September as library card signup month.
The proclamation will be presented by Councilor Lubke. Do we have someone to receive the proclamation? Mr. Director.
Whereas libraries play a key role in the education and development of children, and whereas libraries bridge the learning gap by offering vital digital and print resources, and whereas libraries offer critical access to technology and innovative educational programming for all ages, and whereas libraries continue to redefine and expand their services and transform their communities, and whereas the library card is the most important school supply of all, and whereas a free library card is the coolest card you can own. Now, therefore, the city council, president of the city of Beloit, does hereby declare September 2015 as library card signup month in our community, and encourages citizens to sign up for the coolest card and rediscover the Beloit Public Library, presented this eighth day of September 2015. Congratulations, Nick, and board.
Thank you, Councilor Lubke and council members. I just want to quick introduce, just to show that it's not just a piece of paper, but we have just a couple of events coming up. I want to introduce Andrea Levine. She's our outreach and communications coordinator, just to tell you about a couple of those events.
So we've got three big events coming up in September, starting out with Why We Love the Packers, a tailgate in the library, starting out with Bratz, Hot Dogs, and All the Fixins, and followed by a presentation by author Jim Rice about the Packers. So, all you Packer fans out there, this is the event for you. It is on Saturday, September ninth, the day before the Packers play the Seattle Seahawks. The week after that, on Saturday, September twenty-sixth, we have a special performance by the First Brigade Band. This is a band from Watertown, Wisconsin, that presents period brass band music performed on antique instruments. So you can enjoy history live and take yourself back to the Civil War with the First Brigade Band. The last week in September, we had the First Amendment Movie Marathon, celebrating Band Books Week and our nation's First Amendment with films based on band books. We are showing The Da Vinci Code, Clockwork Orange, The Color Purple, and The Shining. These are all, as you might know, adult films, and they're going to be shown in the afternoon while the kids are at school. So come on down to the library.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Item three B.
Is an informational presentation from the American Cancer Society and the Southwest Alliance for Tobacco Prevention on e-cigarettes.
Actually, it's youth to youth, which were also Southwest Alliance for Tobacco Prevention. Just pushing out. Okay. Okay. We really wanted to share, we're finding more and more new information about e-cigarettes constantly, almost daily lately, and we really wanted to share that information with you. And so, did you say just click? I'm sorry.
Yep, just point it at this computer here. And hit.
Okay, great. As cigarette smoking rates have dropped, the tobacco industry has created a new product called e-cigarettes, and also known as vaping. This is to hook and find new customers. One of these products, as I said, is e-cigarettes, and these products are getting a lot of attention, and the sales are increasing tremendously. And as you can see from this very good-looking guy, this is the kind of advertisement that they're doing. So what is an e-cigarette? E-cigarettes are devices that allow users to inhale a vapor containing nicotine and other substances. They're generally battery-operated and use a vaporizer to heat a refillable cartridge that then releases chemicals out of it. They come in many flavors. In fact, they come in seventy-eight hundred flavors that we know of, such as strawberry, cherry crush, cotton candy. And I've heard that if you go into the store, you can get sex on the beach, so they're really promoting it to the teenagers and young people. And the health consequences in the inhalants from the vapors that come out, they're unknown. We're learning more and more. There's currently no scientific research that proves that these help people quit. These are what e-cigarettes look like. They can look like a cigarette, they can look like a pen, they can look like a marijuana bong. They're all kinds. As you can tell from looking at them, parents and teachers would not know that they're an e-cigarette. So there's a lot of reasons to be concerned about e-cigarettes. E-cigarettes definitely give off more than just water vapor, as the ads tell. While the health effects of the vapor are unknown, initial lab tests developed by the FDA are showing us that they do carry cancer-causing agents, carcinogens. And one of those cancer-causing agents is formaldehyde, which is used to preserve dead bodies. They're finding that in an e-cigarette, they're finding five to fifteen times higher rates of formaldehyde than a cigarette. Formaldehyde can cause cancer, can cause leukemia and other cancers. Also, e-cigarettes are showing that they have little battery particles. They also are showing that it has a chemical in it, like antifreeze. And as we share with the kids, you know, if a cat drank antifreeze, that would kill them, and that's being found in e-cigarettes. This was taken at a vapor bar up north, and a lot of people say choose to smoke free, but really from e-cigarettes, there's a lot of smoke that's inhaled out of them, as you can see from this picture. Secondhand aerosol is exhaled into the air by users, and it doesn't come from the e-cigarette device, it's the stuff in it. It's estimated that bystanders, people that are standing by it, can inhale as much as fifty percent of the aerosol that's in it. And one of our primary concerns are children, pregnant women, people with heart disease. In fact, one of the e-cigarette labels, one of the warnings on it says, "Not intended for use by women who are pregnant or breastfeeding, persons with or at risk of heart disease, or taking medicine for depression or asthma." So even the e-cigarette makers know that this isn't safe for people. As I said, they're not regulated. Contents vary widely, it may not match the ingredients. In fact, they don't even have to put an ingredient on them, but many of them do. Some of them say that they're nicotine-free, but every e-cigarette that's out there has traces of nicotine, so they're not nicotine-free. And ninety percent of e-cigarette juices are made in China, so they're not even made in our country. And this one really blows me away, because as one of my staff members tell the youth members, when you use an e-cigarette, it's like putting a battery in your mouth, and your parents tell you not to put batteries close to your skin. Battery explosions are not uncommon with e-cigarettes. This man right here lost part of his teeth and burnt part of his tongue from an e-cigarette. There's been explosions through ceilings, things like that, because it is a battery, and you are putting it in your mouth. This one concerns me a lot, because I'm a grandchild, but they come in such, so many different flavors that are very enticing to little kids to pick up. As you can see, the poison centers have seen a huge increase of calls that have been made. In fact, as you can see here, three percent of the calls were from e-cigarettes in 2010, forty-one point seven percent in 2014. So we're concerned about the children as well. And as I said, e-cigarettes have not been approved by the FDA to help smokers quit. It's not a quitting device, as sometimes it's sold to be. We know what works. The combination of cessation products, counseling, things like that is what works. In fact, e-cigarettes have caused people to become dual users because of clean indoor air, they can't smoke inside, so they're using e-cigarettes, and then they're smoking as well. What that does is our heart attack rates are going up because of that. And it really undermines the smoke-free air law. It's very, very difficult for law enforcement to enforce our smoke-free air law, which Beloit worked so hard for. The state of Wisconsin is smoke-free because of the city of Beloit. We had a big part in that. Now, when a law enforcement officer goes into someplace and somebody's using an e-cigarette, they can't determine if it's a cigarette or e-cigarette, and e-cigarettes at this time are legal. So, and then that one part, the new e-joint, I don't know if you've been watching the news, but we've been knowing this for a while, but e-cigarettes aren't only for nicotine. All kinds of drugs are being put into e-cigarettes. One of the main things that they've been talking about in the news is hash oil, marijuana. The THC levels of that is ninety-eight percent. A person could be smoking that when they're out in public, put it in their pocket, nobody knows it. They have a, they just had a hit that's equivalent to about five joints out on the street. So very scary when you're thinking about them driving or anything else. Oops, sorry. And definitely, e-cigarettes appeal to youth. This billboard here is from Janesville, and we had a lot of people call in about that, because that middle girl looks like she's about fourteen. But a lot of billboards, you can open up a magazine, you'll see advertising, television, and as you can see, they're placed next to candy. We did environmental scans just recently. The number of juice flavors out there, I mean cotton candy, cherry, anything you could This is why I think it's so important for you guys to know this, for everyone to know this. Last year, we've seen our e-cigarette rates triple. In the state of Wisconsin, I've got the numbers here, just a second. Wisconsin kids are using these at an eight percent rate. Three point nine percent of middle schools are using them, Wisconsin kids in thirteen point four percent. In 2013, only one point one percent of middle school kids were using them, and four point five percent of high school. These things are enticing, and they're working, and what scares me is when you vape, it goes directly to the brain, very fast, and they're getting our kids addicted, and that's exactly what they wanted. So I'm going to have Emily White from American Cancer Society share a little bit.
Good evening. My name's Emily White, I'm from the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. I'm a campaign specialist there, and so really what I'm here to talk to you today is about e-cigarettes and how they fit in our, with our smoke-free air law. This past July, Wisconsin celebrated its fifth anniversary of Wisconsin's smoke-free air law. This law is widely popular. Eighty-six percent of Wisconsinites support clean indoor air. And just so you know, I think Debbie alluded to this, e-cigarettes are currently not included in our state's smoke-free air law. That means we can go to restaurants, we can use them at bars where we're out at night. And so we do have public health concerns. Debbie just covered quite a few of them, and I think we can certainly say that e-cigarettes do not meet our standard for smoke-free air and for clean indoor air. So a handful of communities have passed ordinances recently that would include e-cigarettes in their smoke-free air law. Janesville just passed theirs a couple weeks ago now, so this would prohibit the use of e-cigarettes wherever traditional cigarettes are prohibited. So it's not about prohibiting individual use, it's about protecting our smoke-free air, protecting this law that eighty-six percent of Wisconsinites have come to expect and love. Beloit passed the smoke-free air law before the state did, I think it was in 2007. So they had, you know, Beloit has had an interest in protecting public health while they're out at restaurants, while they're out in the community. And so I think that this is something to consider, as well as other communities are starting to follow this trend of including e-cigarettes in their smoke-free air law, is remembering, you know, the intent that the city had, you know, many, many years ago before the state took action. And then ACS CAN supports local governments' efforts to improve, improve public health, and we support laws that would treat e-cigarettes like other tobacco products, and this would include adding e-cigarettes in the smoke-free air law. Debbie has a couple folders here that we'll pass out in a little bit. That just covers, you know, sums up the ton of information we provided you with this evening. It also includes some model language that Janesville used when they were drafting their ordinance, and once they passed their ordinance. And if you have any questions on e-cigarettes, or kind of maybe want to pursue going down the route that other communities have had, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay. And item four, public hearings, we have item four A.
Which is a proposed ordinance to repeal and recreate Section 5-400 of the zoning ordinance, Chapter nineteen of the Code of General Ordinances for the city of Beloit relating to the floodplain zoning districts.
Madam Director.
We received draft copies of the new floodplain ordinances a while back. They were FEMA and DNR updated, they've essentially the flood insurance study and the flood insurance rate maps for all of Rock County. We are required to adopt those into our zoning ordinance by September sixteenth of this year, in order for property owners in the city to remain eligible for participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. The maps are all back there, there's a couple layers of maps on there. They were also included in the packet. The major changes in terms of the floodplain maps themselves are that the Rotary River Center and the Rock Barn Grill are being removed from the floodplain. The floodplain along Fourth Street is going to be slightly smaller. Part of the Iron Works complex will be added to the floodway. The floodway and floodplain will be larger along Turtle Creek, particularly in the Bootmaker and Moccasin neighborhood. A larger portion of the Freitag parcel, which is the parcel, when you're on Milwaukee Road and you go over the bridge, where it's flooded in the past, that area is being expanded. The Riverbend site is actually being removed from the floodplain, and many properties north of Broad Street will be added to the Turtle Creek floodplain. There were also changes to the ordinance itself beyond adding the panels to the ordinance. DNR did notify us of the need to adopt their updated model floodplain ordinance. I think it was in '08 that we last adopted their model, but they did a new model which was required to be adopted. The most, it's generally the same, but the most substantive change included a lengthy section on hydraulic and hydrologic studies that may be required if a proposed project will obstruct or change flood flow. We did send press releases out on these floodplain map changes. We did attempt, try to notify the public, even though DNR also did, to let them know when the public information sessions did happen. Included in the staff report for Plan Commission were the specific dates of those sessions. We did put the required notices in the paper, but we also did notify people when those public sessions were happening with DNR. Plan Commission did hold a public hearing review this at their last meeting, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval of the attached ordinance.
Thank you.
And we are asking that you suspend the rules and do the first and second reading tonight.
Thank you. All right. I'll open the public hearing on item four A. Anyone wishing to speak on item four A, please approach the podium and state your name and Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item four A. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item four A. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item four A. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
Shall move.
Moved by Kincaid, and second by Lubke. Does anyone wish to speak on suspending the rules? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We've suspended the rules by a vote of five to zero. Do we have a motion on the merits?
Second.
Moved by Lubke, and second by Kelly. Any other questions or comments from councilors? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes five to zero. Next is item five. It is citizens' participation. We've reached the point in the meeting for members of the public to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. The council will not act on any requests this evening unless the item you are speaking about is already on our agenda, but we may act on requests at a future meeting, or we may refer the speaker to staff or assistants. We ask that you hold your comments to three minutes or less and avoid making personal attacks of any kind. Do we have any persons wishing to come forward and speak during citizens' participation?
Good evening, President Haynes and Honorable Council Members and City Manager Luther. My name is Julie Lewis, I live in Beloit. I'm at twenty-one twenty-nine East Ridge Road, and I'm here today to ask you to consider looking, as you are looking at your strategic plan in the Public Works Department specifically, at improving the bike access in Beloit in particular. I have, I have two suggestions. One is on White Avenue, and the other is on Cranston Avenue. I think for two main reasons, the council should look at these two particular locations very carefully as you're looking at the Public Works strategic plan. The first is they're unsafe. They are main pedestrian, they have a lot of pedestrian traffic, particularly in between the river, the high school, and the east side of Beloit. And secondly, they're really citizen-unfriendly and very, very tourism-unfriendly. And I'll just give you a quick example. I was trying to ride my bicycle from my home to Beloit Memorial High School, where my children go to school for a meeting. Riding down White Avenue, you have to ride on the sidewalk. When you ride on the sidewalk, it is covered with glass, and I had to dodge two pit bulls, one that was not tied to anything, and another that was tied with a rope to the house. I felt like I was on a reality show. And really, we, that is a pedestrian byway that can be beautified, and a lot would be added by putting in a bike lane. So I'm, I just urge the council to consider, in your public work strategic planning, to take a look at White Avenue and what it could be. It could be, it would be an improvement, I think, for the neighbors who live there, as well as for pedestrians who use that byway every day. Secondly, on Cranston Avenue, and this is between Collingswood and Show Pier, there's a section that has no, it doesn't have any access at all, it's just that the sidewalk goes to Collingswood, and people do bike on the sidewalk, and then people who know will cross over and go through the Collingswood neighborhood to get to Show Pier. But people who don't, or aren't thinking about it, including middle schoolers who are going to Aldrich, will ride on Cranston Road. And I cannot tell you how many times I have almost, have gone by somebody way too close who is riding in the road on Cranston, because there's really no access for a bicycle. So I, I would like to ask the council to consider looking at finishing in some way access for bicycles along Cranston Road, or at a minimum, pointing bicyclists to a safe way to get between Collingswood on Cranston and Show Pier. And I, I would say, I think it's consistent with your goal, number one. I also think it's consistent with the goal of becoming a bicycle-friendly community, and we, you know, we bring in a lot of tourism that way. We could do more, and we could do better. So I ask for your consideration along those lines. Thank you for your time.
I will refer you to both the city manager and to our Public Works Director, and I assure you that as my, my wife goes down White twice a day on her bicycle, she will not drive to work, she always rides to carry aerosol on her bicycle. We're well aware of the shortcomings of that, of that area, whether, you know, and it's in the forefront of our thinking within those corridors, I assure you of that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Do we have anyone else wishing to come forward and speak on item five, citizens' participation? Second call for persons to come forward and speak under citizens' participation. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak under citizens' participation. Hearing none, I'll close citizens' participation, and we'll open the consent agenda, item six. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point of the agenda. Do we have any councilors wishing something removed from the consent agenda today? Hearing none, the consent agenda consists of items six A through six D. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved by Slonaker, second by Kincaid. All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes by a vote of five to zero. Just for public notice, item seven A has been removed from the agenda. The city attorney has asked for time to incorporate new information that has just come to light on this resolution, and so we will hold that off to, till the packet is ready. Item eight is ordinances, item eight A.
Is an ordinance amending the city of Beloit zoning district map to change the zoning district classification of the property located at twenty-four sixty Milwaukee Road from C-one Office District and M-two General Manufacturing District to PLI, Public Lands and Institution District.
Madam Director.
The request includes, includes the main church campus parcel located at twenty-four sixty Milwaukee Road, which is currently Zoned C-one, as well as the vacant church-owned parcel that includes a stormwater retention pond to the south of the campus, which is addressed as fourteen twenty Office Park Lane, and is currently Zoned M-two. The future land use map in the, in the comprehensive plan shows these properties as a plan for institutional and community service uses, and it also suggests a PLI zoning designation for those, that kind of category, which is a special purpose district that is intended to accommodate major public and quasi-public uses such as parks, schools, cemeteries, municipal buildings, and religious institutions. They are not proposing any land use changes at all at this time, although this was a reason, if the rezoning was approved, it would legalize the church's accessory uses, such as daycare centers and community service uses, which are expressly permitted in the PLI district. Plan Commission did review this on August fifth and voted four one to recommend approval of the zoning map amendment.
Thank you. This is up for second reading. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Lubke, and second by Slonaker. Do we have any additional questions or comments on item eight A? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes five to zero. Item eight B.
Is an ordinance to create Section sixteen point zero eight sub-three sub-B three of the Code of General Ordinances of the city of Beloit pertaining to smoking outside city-owned buildings. First reading.
Madam Attorney.
Just briefly, the library had requested, initially this got started because the library requested a ordinance change to prohibit smoking within thirty feet of the entrance for the library. We did meet at department head, and staff thought it would appropriate to include all city-owned buildings, the entrances for all city-owned buildings, to be included in that thirty-foot prohibition. Nick is here, if you'd like to speak to the library's concerns, but if you have any questions, I'd be certainly happy to answer them. The city has the authority under the law to prohibit only city-owned property and not any private property, so this is only strictly limited to city-owned property.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Well, this is going to be first reading, so we'll have a, do we have any, I'll open it up for questions and comments. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Councilor Lubke.
I'm very much in favor of this, but it's kind of difficult when you go to the library and before you walk in, or if you open the doors, that smoke follows you in from people sitting in those benches, or people waiting for the buses, so I think it's a very good idea, and I, I'm very much in favor of it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion to lay over?
Shall move.
Second.
Moved by Kincaid, second by Slonaker. All in favor of laying this over to the next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's been laid over by a vote of five to zero. Item nine would be appointments, there are none. Item ten is councillor activities and upcoming events. Let's start with councillor Slonaker.
The EOC meeting was recently, a couple weeks ago, continuing to want to educate people to buy homes. And then I've also attended the thrushery that was interesting up in Edgerton, and that's about all.
Okay, thank you.
Been very busy.
Councillor Kelly.
Well, I've been too busy to do any fun. School's back in session, everybody's back to work, everybody's like high gear, so it's the way of my life today.
Okay, thank you. And councillor Lubke.
Before I, I just want to address what Julie had said about the strip on Cranston there, where the cars are supposed to go forty, but sometimes they're going forty-five. It's very fast there for a while. This is the, this area between Cranston and Show Pier, right by Turtle Creek, that new subdivision, and the sidewalk ends abruptly at the end of Turtle. I questioned that years ago because of all the kids going to Aldrich School, and I was told that if the kids turn right and go down those, we've, in and out there are sidewalks are safe areas, but most kids don't think that way, and most, most adults don't. And I, I've seen some very close calls too, Julie. So it'd be nice to get that sidewalk extended past the synagogue and right on down there It's, so yeah, I think we're well aware, but thank you for bringing that to our attention. I was happy with other councillors to be, and our city manager to be at the Beloit College-sponsored Business Education Partnership at the Garden Inn. And our city manager spoke with the superintendent of schools, and gave a wonderful pep talk for Beloit in both arenas. Both Tom and Lori show that Beloit has a very bright future. With other councillors, at the Colak Administration Center, we sat and listened to the citizens talk about the proposed redesign and housing for that building. And it was, it was interesting. And there'll be a follow-up, I guess, before the city plan commission on the 18th, is that right? 24th? But I'm sure there'll be a lot of citizens there expressing their, their opinion on that. That's all I have.
Right. Councillor Kincaid.
I only want to reiterate that problem on Cranston. I only went on there once, and that was enough. I hope we can do something about it. That's all I have.
And I'll have to say, bike safety in the city is one of my primary concerns. I share that with all of you. Other than that, I really don't have anything to add to this. So we'll move on to, there is no city manager's presentation, which would be item 11, so we'll move on to item 12, reports from boards and city officers. And 12A.
Is a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit the Urban Forestry Catastrophic Storm Grant.
Good evening.
Yes.
Okay. The Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources has an urban forestry catastrophic grant program, which is fairly new for municipals that have experienced a governor-declared state of emergency. This grant would not interfere at all with the FEMA funding. However, this grant would allow for pre-event funding to occur. And you would also have to annually qualify for this grant. So every year, council would have to approve this resolution. For this particular DNR grant program, unlike the urban forestry normal program, there is no match. The eligible costs, which being through a state of emergency with that storm on the west side of Beloit, that was a federal declared. The nice thing about this is we can do stump removal, we can do replacement. So you don't have to come up with the money to replace all the trees that everyone loses. This is part of that. We could request 50% advance payment on expected costs, so you can estimate your costs, and then you can get a 50% upfront. And the grant that the city can receive would be anywhere from $4,000 to $50,000, and it is on a first-come, first-served basis. So say that a wind shear went through, or a tornado went through. Typically, more than one community is going to experience this. The, the communities that have this resolution on file will be the first ones looked at to disperse the money. So staff recommends that the council approve the urban forestry catastrophic grant. Is there any questions?
Thank you. I think first, let's go ahead and get a, a motion to approve. Motion moved by Lubkey, second by Slonaker. Do we have any questions or comments from councillors? Do you wish to add something, Madam City Manager? Go ahead.
I just wanted to publicly acknowledge Chris Walsh and thank her for pursuing grant opportunities such as this, that we can have in effect prior to any incidents occurring, so that we increase our likelihood of being able to receive those financial resources. And I think all of us who have been through any major storm event knows how critical it is to have those in place. So this is clearly something that we're trying to do on a citywide basis to make sure that we're utilizing as many grant dollars as we can, and to have those in place before they're needed. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Right, thank you. And if we've, we have a motion, and a second. Do we have any additional questions or comments? All right then, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes by a vote of five to zero. Item 12B.
Is a resolution adopting the City of Beloit's strategic plan for 2016.
Madam City Manager.
Thank you very much. You have before you the recommended 2016 strategic plan. We did incorporate several language changes that were discussed at the workshop held by the city council to discuss the recommendations within the 2016 plan. I would mention, as a response to earlier questions, we do have some overarching language in the Public Works Department that relates to being a bike-friendly community. But the specific components and the funding attached to those would be incorporated into the 2016 budget. So I'll be happy to review that with our city engineer and public work staff and get back to you in regard to those specific items. I would like to point out that this year, the most significant changes within our recommended 2016 strategic plan are in relationship to the police department. And on pages... 39, I believe, through 44, roughly. Yes, 39 to 44, are the new items that are incorporated into the police department's strategic plan. And the purpose of these particular goals are to, in general terms, reduce crime, fear, and disorder in our community through a neighborhood-based, problem-oriented, intelligence-led approach. And there are some very specific components to how we can achieve that. So those are the most substantive changes in regard to this year's recommended budget. I would anticipate additional meetings with the council and staff to review any other changes, and perhaps to refresh our vision, mission, and values. They are quality, solid items, but we have an opportunity with many new members of the council, and certainly myself, in working with our staff as a whole in cross-representation across our employment base, to look at refreshing those items and making sure that we are current. We did add to our mission statement for 2016, as part of the conversation with the city council, at the beginning of our mission statement, that our overall mission is to serve the public with courtesy and respect. And while I think we all may take for granted that that's why we exist as a local government institution, I think it's important to remind our employees and to remind our residents that it is our duty to be here at their service. And so the remainder of the language is the same, and it's certainly more descriptive, but that is a focus point. And our department heads and some of our division directors have also participated in some other brainstorming activities in looking at vision and mission, and those will be a, an opportunity to expand in the future. So with that, I'd be happy to respond to any specific questions you may have. This certainly is a lengthy document. This has historically been incorporated into our budget document that is submitted, but is previously previewed and approved by the council before formally being incorporated into the budget document.
Okay, thank you. I think I'd like to start with a, a motion to adopt. Do we have such a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Moved by Lubkey, second by Kincaid. Do we have any questions or comments from councillors? Councillor Lubkey.
Just a positive comment thus far, I just, I want to commend both our city manager and our police chief for a proactive program that was in the paper the other night. We heard about it on, via the, our website, but the roll call program that was instituted by our acting chief, whereas people, individuals on parole are updated as to some, some of the functions in the police department, and they're kept aboard. So they feel part of the process in their rehabilitation. And it's, it's things like this that build trust and communication and cooperation with the public. So instead of having people, just look at them as criminals, they're brought in and talked to and worked with. And so I give credit to our acting chief and our city manager for starting this proactive program that will enhance Beloit, and again, hopefully, reduce crime. Just, just wanted to add that as far as the strategic plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments on the strategic plan? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes five to zero. Item 12C.
Is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase order for solid waste collection vehicles.
Mrs. Walsh.
Well, this is appropriate to talk trash on the last issue of the evening. So the City of Beloit, we are hoping is going to move toward automated solid waste collection, which includes both trash and recycling in 2016, actually in June. The purchase of the collection vehicles, the automated vehicles, is needed for the transition. That would need to be done this fall. The city is requesting approval to sign a purchase order, which commits to purchasing the collection vehicles funded in '16. And I just wanted to review quickly the key issues. So over the last several years, our workers' comp claims have been significantly increasing for solid waste. In fact, I was in Phoenix last week, and they have gone to automated trash. Their average is a little over $1,000 per solid waste collector and workers' comp per year. Ours is pushing $9,600 per year per collector. So maybe 9.5, 9.6 times what an automated collection would experience. We hope moving to an automated collection would follow the City of Phoenix, and we would reduce our workers' comp, and then as well, reduce our city's rate in the long term. The new collection system would reduce the existing fleet from 11 side-load vehicles to seven automated, reducing fuel usage, maintenance, and replacement costs. We expect to see an increase in recycling, which has happened all over the country. Communities average 20%. I do not know if our city will be that high because of what we currently have. And we also expect a reduction in solid waste, which is what, you know, solid waste is all about. And we did look into the community that Dave, David had mentioned in California, and they do actually use a 32-gallon container for trash only. 96-gallon for recycling. Our city is not there to do that. I can tell you that. So currently, a resident can set out 195 gallons of trash curbside each week. With automation, with the 96, we're going to limit it to 96. The cart system, I think, will clean up the city immensely. We won't see the piles of trash. We are offering a dumpster service at a fee, which we had mentioned the last time that we talked, two different-sized dumpsters. We are not proposing to increase the fee. I think this program helps stabilize the fee over several years. Definitely reduces our use of fuel and reduces our carbon footprint, which is a great thing. It will increase and improve our Smart Fleet award that we have with the state. Our diversion rate for recycling should increase. And the funds that we are asking for, for these collection vehicles, is $1,358,270. And that is the net, assuming $375,000 for the trades. We have a letter from Arnow, a company that we have dealt with for 25 years, that says if I can sell them for more money 30 days prior to us, so the month of May, we have a 30-day window to try to get more money for these trucks and sell them either on public surplus or as part of a grant. We've contacted two different grants, Clean Diesel. I just don't know if their award is going to be timely for us, but they are interested in helping us fund our trucks. The company has sold four, so we won't mess with those, but the rest of the trucks are up for us to try to get more money for them. So that is the base figure we are looking for at this, this time. And I had attached a resolution. There are quotes. There's information on the truck and the body. So I would ask council to support a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase order for solid waste automated vehicles.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll get this discussion rolling with a motion. Do we have a motion to approve?
Shall move.
Moved by Kincaid, second by Slonaker. I'll state that, just so that everybody's well aware, that this is to execute a purchase order. This is not actually, the money will actually be discussed within the 2016 budget. And this is going to be part of a comprehensive revamp of our, our solid waste ordinances, as well as some of the, some other associated issues, like screening and other items for the, these containers. Because clearly, the size of the containers are going to be difficult for many people to store inside. So I expect we'll get a chance to talk about this in much greater detail another time. Do we have any other questions or comments from councillors tonight?
So how often are yard waste picked up now?
So we have a spring program, and then we have a monthly program until fall collection, and then we have a two-week program in the fall. Plus, we have about 100, 150 residents that don't use that. They use the vacuum service because they have way too many trees.
Then when you have these nice fancy trucks, any chance that yard waste can be picked up more often?
Oh geez.
Just throwing that out there, for you to think about. It was mentioned to me by a citizen the other day, that some communities are, pick up yard waste more often, and it encourages people to do stuff with their stuff. Otherwise, you have to save your stuff for a month.
Well, we encourage, we have, we do have a Cadillac program right now. And that's not just according to me. That is according to DNR, that just did our audit with Jody. And we would encourage people to leave their clippings on the yard and let them go back into the yard as fertilizer. Not all people like that. So then we say, if you don't like that, we do have a service, and we are lucky to have Leafland, not a few miles right into the township. But I can tell you, from a collection point of view, we're driving, we have one guy driving that route that week. And I'd say, Jody, correct me if I'm wrong, at least three days of the week, that truck is less than a third full, or a quarter full. So we're just driving, looking.
During the summer months.
Yeah, like July, August, September.
Nobody wants to save their stuff.
So I guess I would like to know, I mean, when are they wanting it? If they're wanting more in spring or fall, or?
If I, if I had the garbage picked up, I wouldn't have to drive to Leaf, I mean, to the landfill and jail, three times a week.
That would be another burden.
Hmm? Is it? Okay, I just.
Okay.
I'm not saying it's feasible, I just, just bring it up. Just brought up to me.
Okay, all right. Madam City Manager, go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that the reason that we're requesting the timing now to place this purchase order into effect is the lead time required to have the trucks prepared. And so that purchase order has to go out in October, even though we will not be taking possession of the trucks until 2016, as Chris explained. And so again, the budget will reflect that purchase. And I also wanted the public in particular to understand that that $1.3 million that's discussed to purchase these trucks is coming out of our fleet replacement fund. So those are funds the city has set aside over time to be available for major purchases. We are not borrowing for the purchase of these trucks. Certainly, we're not issuing bonds, and in fact, this is really a borrowing, if you will, from the solid waste fund, from the internal fund that will be paid back over time to rebuild that fleet replacement, so that we have funds available. So that's a substantial amount for a purchase, and I wanted to be sure that the source of funds was clear, and the impact to our citizens and our taxpayers.
Thank you. All right then, do we have any other questions or comments on this item?
I think so.
Oh, sorry. I missed, I missed that check. Go ahead.
This program is, in my opinion, one of the most forward, affordable programs we've run into in a long, long time. And I want to thank you for the work that you're putting into it. I look forward to having the garbage picked up in a new and totally different, better way.
Well, I appreciate that, but we had a team that has been working for a very long time on this, and I've got to say, great, great job. In the back, you will see two-size toters. Again, we are offering the 96, and after people try them. We did a carbon footprint, two of the members on the team. Just in case you're asked... Um, just in case you're asked, you know, how do I handle these ginormous, uh, containers? They're actually smaller than what you're currently setting out, that footprint, and they did the measurements and they laid out tape, so you could see that.
Your, um, the council had its opportunity to see your team at work when you first presented it, uh, to us, and I can tell you, we were most impressed with the team effort.
Thank you.
All right. Any, uh, additional questions or comments? Right then, uh, all in favor, say aye? Aye? Any opposed? Item passes five to zero. And finally, uh, item thirteen is adjournment. Moved by Slonaker, second by, uh, Kelly. All in favor of adjourning, say aye? Aye? Any opposed? We are adjourned.